So let's dive right in. Ms. Rothenberg, you're going to start with a presentation on the American Rescue Funds.
Absolutely. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. It's my pleasure to be here to you today in front of you to provide an overview of the American Rescue Plan Act and its funding. So quickly, we're going to look at the allocation of funds that were provided, qualified uses of those funds given to us in the interim final rules, and the administration's recommendation for expenditure of those funds. So first, a quick, quick look. There was approximately forty-five point six billion dollars that was allocated to metropolitan cities. They came up with the dollar values by using the CDBG formula. The city's allocation was twenty-four million and twenty-four million, five hundred thirty thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. As you're all aware, it's coming in two tranches. The first tranche we received in May, the second we anticipate to receive May twenty-twenty-two. So the monies can be spent for forward-looking expenses incurred from March twenty-twenty-one forward. They have to be obligated before December of twenty-twenty-four and spent by the twenty-twenty-six. So there are four broad categories that are what's considered eligible expenditures of those dollars. The first are monies that are spent to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. The second broad category is premium pay provided to eligible workers. There is another category for refunding lost revenues. And finally, the category for expenditures in appropriate infrastructure projects, including water, sewer, and broadband. So the first category, the public health and negative economic impacts, it's looking at those services and programs that are used to contain and mitigate the spread of COVID-nineteen. And there's some specifically enumerated examples of things that the interim rule provides are eligible expenses, but it's really just an illustrative list. There are other things that could be considered. But this is, this slide that's up shows you some of those things that are specifically identified as eligible expenditures. The rules also point out that the public health impacts and expenditures that are appropriate are those expenditures that are, provide services to address behavioral healthcare needs that are exacerbated by the pandemic, payroll of covered benefits for certain categories of employees, including public health, healthcare, human services, and public health and safety or similar, similarly situated employees. There's also a category of addressing negative economic impacts that were caused by the public health emergencies, such as support for small businesses, assistance for workers and their families, speeding recovery of the tourism industry, travel industry, and hospitality sectors, and importantly, rebuilding the public sector capacity. Finally, in addressing negative health impacts and economic impacts, the rules stress a need to look at serving those hardest-hit communities and families, looking at the disproportionate impacts of those individuals and that type of thing. So those are all of the types of categories that we looked at when administration received the recommendations from the departments. Again, more negative impacts, looking at addressing educational disparities and promoting healthy childhood environments. A quick look at the overview of premium pay. Premium pay is for essential workers. It's limited to up to thirteen dollars an hour. That's above and beyond what the normal compensation rate is, and it's capped at twenty-five thousand dollars per worker. The regulations also, again, encourage that the payment should be prioritized toward your lower-income workers to offset disproportionate impacts to those workers. They also require that the workers who are compensated are workers who are actually physically present, and those who are working via telework would not be eligible workers for the purposes of premium pay. The premium pay also allows for, or wants to, again, look at those folks who make less money. So if the proposed premium pay would provide income over one-hundred-and-fifty percent of the greater of the county or state annual average, then it would require written justification of the mayor in order to provide those premium pay funds. And here, we also have a list of some of those categories that the rule says specifically are critical infrastructure sectors that would be eligible. But again, the rule provides the mayor with the authority to identify those employees that he believes are fit within, within the category. So the, the American Rescue Plan defines eligible workers as those workers needed to maintain continuity of operations of essential, critical infrastructure sectors, and additional sector as each governor of the state or territory or each tribal government may designate to protect the health and well-being of the residents of the state, territory, or tribal government. The interim rules and the direction that was entered following the definition that's contained in the act itself gives or extends what's listed here for the governor and the tribal governments to the mayor. So he then has the authority to identify those additional essential workers. The premium pay can be provided to government workers in addition to third-party employees who also fit within those categories.
Ms. Rothenberg, before you turn off that slide, so this seems to defer to the governor for the definition of eligible workers. Do we have any such lists from the state?
The interim rules?
No, this, ARPA defines eligible workers, those workers needed to maintain blah, 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 and additional sectors as each governor may designate.
Right. But all I'm saying to you is this provision from the American Rescue Plan Act
Yeah.
as further specified and clarified in the interim rules does too apply to local government workers.
Okay, alright, so the interim rules bring it down to the local.
Exactly. And those additional workers that are identified by mayors are the appropriate persons of the government. So now we move to replacing lost revenues, which is the third of the four categories that are eligible expenses. In this category, there is broad latitude to the government to identify what, to spend those funds on. Specifically, the only thing that it, it requires specifically is that you can support your services up to the amount of the lost revenue. It's really looking to make sure that governments are able to continue to provide to the residents the level of services that it was able to provide pre-pandemic. You can use, obviously, those funds to avoid cuts in services. The funds are calculated by comparing the actual revenue to an alternative of what should have been or could have been expected to occur in the absence of the pandemic. Those calculations are being managed and handled by finance. There are some very specific rules and guidelines, pages and pages of them, which I'm sure you don't want to become intimately familiar with, but the Finance Department will provide the actual number of the lost revenue amounts that we will be anticipating as, in replacing as recommended by administration. The years that the fund allows us to recover for are December thirty-one, twenty-twenty, through December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three, projecting out the additional lost revenues that are calculated, again, based on formulas that are provided within the guidance documents. So the city may presume that all of the diminution of the actual revenue is, in fact, due to COVID-nineteen once those numbers are calculated. The final category that's outlined is investing in water, sewer, and broadband. They're very specific projects that the, again, the document, the guiding documents provide to us examples of things that would be appropriate expenditures. We received several recommendations from the Utilities Department. All of them had pretty hefty price tags on them. You'll hear from the administration on that. Broadband also is an eligible expenditure. We didn't have any needs in, in that regard within the city from the IT department. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Fay to discuss with you all administration's recommendations unless there's specific questions to me.
Any questions for the city attorney before she?
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, members of the board.
Good morning.
Staff and those in attendance. As it relates to administration's recommendations, when we look at the four categories, I want to start with the category that is not recommended, and that is the water, sewer, broadband. Given the estimated dollar tickets that's attached to those staff recommendations, and also taking into consideration that additional funding, separate and apart from the rescue dollars, may be coming down the pack, we've determined that it would not be appropriate to consider that category for American Rescue Funds. With that being said, the recommendations that we are bringing forward for consideration are the three listed on the slide. First, to replace the lost revenue that the city has experienced and continue to experience, I would just footnote for the board, as part of, of the budget process to balance for FY twenty-one, we had to deal with the seven million dollars of revenue loss. So I don't want that to be lost on the board as a starting place for replacing lost revenue. The second category is to provide premium pay. As we look at how the city was kept moving forward during the pandemic, we were able to keep public safety operations going as well as building our inspections, moving the city forward in terms of its growth and development. So we have looked at the broad spectrum of classifications who played a critical role in helping to keep the city operational during the pandemic and continues to do so. The third category that we are recommending is the category of public health and negative, negative economic impacts. I would like to point out that we are not recommending any dollar amounts attached to the three categories, and that is by design, given that we have a public hearing in, pending that will affect what we do by way of dollar amounts. What I would like to do, Mayor, is to have on the replacement of the lost revenue, what is going to come forward by way of a recommendation is that the primary use of whatever dollar amount is allocated to this category be put toward vehicle replacement. As we sit right now, the city has about eight million dollars of critical vehicle replacement needs. That eight million dollars does not include the two-point-two-million-dollar vehicle replacement needs in the Police Department, and the board heard a presentation about the police vehicle needs here recently. I would like to have our Support Services Director to give the board an overview of that. And then, as it relates to the premium pay, I would like to have the HR Director to do a brief presentation to the board on the various categories that we are recommending be included as it relates to premium pay. So with that, Ms. Mayor, if I may.
Ms. Johnson, before you proceed there, I think you need to reiterate, because you kind of rushed through it, why we are not recommending amounts today. You, you need to emphasize the rationale for that, please.
It's because of the fact that on the premium pay, we have a public hearing that is to be scheduled that relates to what the board is going to support by way of, of the union, how much the board is going to support in terms of what will be provided. So until that matter is solved.
That's the public hearing on the impasse, correct?
Yes. And until that matter is decided, I don't think it is appropriate for us to bring forward dollar amounts given the vast number of categories of employees. I want to underscore that our recommendation is that we don't just provide premium pay to police and fire, because police and fire, while a critical role in keeping the city going, the city was kept going by other employees. Sanitation continued to do their job. The building inspectors continued to do their job. Finance employees continued to have checks cut. So from my perspective, it is not appropriate for premium pay to be limited to public safety employees, because the city was kept operational by a vast number of category of employees, and I think it's inappropriate to discount their role in keeping the city moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, if I may have Mr. Guzman to come up and give the board a brief overview of the critical vehicle needs that we have for FY twenty-two.
Good morning, Mayor James, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Team members and members of the public. I'm Mario Guzman, Director of Support Services. Alright, overview, I'm going to talk about the history, some deferred replacements and maintenance costs, our current and the current fleet analysis we did, and some of what may happen in the future regarding the implications of not replacing equipment, delivery times, and city services affected. Little history, we did a quick comparison of replacement budgets versus maintenance budgets. Fiscal year eighteen, three hundred thousand dollars for a replacement budget. Our maintenance budget was about four-point-eight million dollars. And this is all general fund. This is excluding the utility. This is for general fund vehicles, and also excluding police. So three hundred thousand for replacement budget, four-point-eight. Maintenance, five hundred thousand, two thousand nineteen, six million in maintenance. Fiscal year twenty, five hundred thousand for replacement, six-point-two for maintenance. And fiscal year twenty-one, this year, we got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we're trending to hit six-point-five million dollars. Two things to note, a garbage truck costs three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Rescue pump, a rescue, a pumper costs about eight hundred thousand dollars. Rescue unit costs about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So you talk about us trying to get real creative with these funds. It's either through leasing or selling and scrapping to try to buy some vehicles. I did put an asterisk there next to COVID. You can see in fiscal year twenty, we got five hundred thousand dollars. And we still went above fiscal year nineteen, six-point-two million. It's important to note that when COVID hit, Recreation Department stopped providing those services. So a lot of vehicles were not being used, yet the maintenance still went up, and that's just because of the age of the fleet. Aside from the hard cost, there's opportunity cost that we're losing as well. Decrease in efficiency has taken much longer for our team members to do their job, be it sanitation workers, streets workers, parks workers. Also, the morale. These individuals, men and women, are paid, they're in the business of fixing things, and you want to see an upset employee take away their tools to complete a job. Overtime increased, downtime increased as well, and also process time. Because of the workload, a lot of things were just outsourced. So there's a lot of redundancies in services. There's a cost to cut a check, a cost to write a contract. All those things that you don't factor in, that's, you know, what I like to consider opportunity cost. So a little bit of the history. Current situation, so what we do every year is, through our system, we kind of track all of the high maintenance assets. And once we identify those, we sit down with every division and department head and identify those assets and work with them collaboratively to identify what needs to be replaced and what it needs to be replaced with. So currently, we ended up categorizing them with critical replacements and recommended replacements. The list combined was actually twelve million dollars. I presented that to Armando. He gave me a funny look, so I walked away, and we cut out the recommended replacements and just focused on the critical replacements. And that was the eight million that Administrator Johnson had spoke about. And that breakdown is Community Services, forty thousand dollars, Fire Rescue, four-point-five, Parks and Recreation, four hundred thousand, Public Works, three million. And I put two million, but the Police Department had presented weeks prior as two-point-two million for a total of ten-point, ten-point-two. So that's the breakdown of the need. And even though we needed twelve million, and I'm not one to turn down money, best management practices, we don't want to replace everything at once, because that means that everything goes bad at once. You want to cycle it in. But we identified eight million dollars as critical replacements that provide services. A further fleet composition of what we're breaking down, Fire Rescue, twenty-four units. Those range from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and fourteen. Public Works, seventeen units, from two thousand and three to two thousand and fifteen. Parks and Recreation, ten units, from two thousand and two to two thousand and fifteen. Community Services has one unit, two thousand and three. The, the replacements include garbage trucks, rescue units, buses, mowers, trailers, and just numerous pieces of equipment that service the public. It's important to note, even though you see a two thousand and fifteen, for certain units, like a Fire Rescue Unit, like a garbage truck, that's a five-year lifecycle. Those first five years, you're going to have maintenance costs, but at that five-year mark, that's where you really want to sell that asset, because we're seeing good money residuals. But when you start climbing into that sixth and seventh years, when you start seeing those maintenance costs skyrocket. So I just want to, you know, make sure people see that. When they see a two thousand and fifteen, should have been replaced in twenty, so it's past its lifecycle costing us more money. So some of the impacts in the future, definitely an increased maintenance cost, increased downtime, service delays. We're starting to experience that now. Teams coming in on Saturdays and Sundays to make sure these garbage trucks are up and running. If you were to cut me a check today, six months to a year and a half, depending on the piece of equipment. If it's a pickup truck or something like that, or a trailer, we might get that in six months. If it's a rescue unit or a garbage truck, anywhere from a year to a year and a half. And also, the police equipment, as I stated last week, would be like about a year. Some good news to, to note, all those replacements, once they come in, we're going to sell those assets. So we will be seeing some surplus revenue with the sale of those assets. Being very conservative, I'm going to say a ten percent residual from those assets, but I suspect more, given our recent auctions. So that's some, some positive news regarding the, the sales of those assets. And the investments in replacement vehicles will allow for reduced costs, increased service efficiencies, starting in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and allow the city to better manage and kind of have a level set so we can fund for future needs. And that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Guzman? Okay, Ms. Johnson? I'm sorry, we do have a question here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Do you know what the total is of our entire fleet? What's the total value? So in other words, in, in the ten-ish million, what percentage of our fleet does that represent? I know there's a lot of numbers to crunch in there.
We can, we can get that data. We have all the, if I had to take a guess, let me get back to you. I'll give you the exact figure. We can see the, the, the total value. I think sanitation department alone, if you just look at all their assets, I want to say at least eighty million is just that fleet, just with their, no, not eighty, I'm sorry, let me take that back.
Don't guess.
Yeah, I'll get you the exact figures.
What I'm trying to understand is how, how big of a push is this comparatively to the whole, as we're going to phase this in over time, looking at the entire fleet? So this is going to take care of today, but then what do we have coming down the road? So looking at how, how big our fleet is and the, and the ages of our fleet, this will take care of us, but for how long?
Well, this will take care of the critical needs. As I mentioned before, it's twelve million dollars with the recommended replacements. The way it works in this business, you're not going to run a vehicle till the tires run off, because it's too late by then. So we've identified eight million that's critical that's needed right now. We're going to need four million next year. And then it's a, it's just an approach of looking at, okay, we might have to replace some things a little bit sooner, extend some things out, so that, for argument's sake, let's say you have ten vehicles for the Fire Department. Let's say you have ten. You don't want to replace ten at once. You don't want to replace five every five years. You want to do two, you know, two every, every five years, so you have a fresh vehicles coming in, and that allows you to have frontline units and reserve units. So to answer your question, eight million will put us to be, you know, so we're not having crisis mode, and then the four million next year will put us in a better position to, to start managing the fleet. But it has to happen every single year. I showed you, I think, one of the slides where, you know, two hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, that's just not sustainable.
Sure, and, and I understand phasing things in over time so that your vehicles don't all age out at the same time. Just having a broader understanding of the bigger picture, I think, is what I'm looking for. Thanks.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you for the presentation. Quick question about the slide in the beginning where you talked about, is about, on average, about a half a million dollars in replacement budget, and on average, about six-point-five million in maintenance each year. Is, is that typical to be that imbalanced like that?
No. When it comes to fleet, you're always going to have an expense. Garbage trucks always break down, rescue vehicles always break down. So you actually want to see more on your capital and less on your, your maintenance budget, because having more on the capital will allow us to increase our opportunity cost by having an increase in efficiencies, overtime, morale, all those kind of things. Once you get, we get to a good place, you know, our goal is ideally to pre-fund vehicles and treat vehicle replacements as an operating fund and not as a capital fund. Not me sitting here, hey, we need breakdowns, we need money. We want to have it to, to where every vehicle is set up like a NASCAR account. You pay into it, and you know what's being replaced at what given time. So with these funds, it would allow us to at least have a level set to hopefully create that kind of program.
Follow-up.
Thank you. So this was a trend years before COVID. Can you talk a little bit about how we got to that scenario?
I'm going to have to defer that to the previous administration, and, I mean, we read the numbers, but it was the funding issue.
Yeah, Assistant City Administrator Armando Vana. I mean, this is just, like a lot of things, is we've never caught up to the previous downturn in the economy. And so the, the fleet, if you look at the fleet, the way it was managed previously, we've never gotten to a point where, as Mario said, we're replace, we're not only replacing vehicles, but we're setting up funds for future replacements. And so this, you know, get these additional funds, as you said, will kind of get us a level set to hopefully move forward with that type of, of, of funding mechanisms where we're pre-funding and putting some money aside every year, so we're not stuck in these crisis modes year after year. But this goes back a very long time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you for the presentation. I think it was the next slide after this slide that listed, yeah, the, the numbers totaling ten million. I believe at the beginning, we said we were going to attribute eight million to this, but not the two million to the police. And I was curious if the two million we're talking about here for the police vehicles is what we discussed with using for the unassigned fund balance for, or is it something, it's just still in the air, something that we need to work out where that fund, those funds are going to come from?
If I could, Mayor, I can take that. The two million was part of the presentation from Captain Clark. The one-point-six million for this fiscal year is what the board approved on a following city commission meeting. The two-point-two million, which was the actual number, is what the slide indicated was going to be needed for FY twenty-two. The demarcation here is that Support Services does not maintain police's fleet. So we've added it in this slide. Under Support Services, they maintain all of the other departments' fleet that are listed here. Police maintain their own fleet. But that does not mean that we have set aside the two-point-two million that police need. It's just maintained by police themselves. So the board will see that as part of the discussion when we get to the proposed balanced budget. And I want to prepare the board that you're not going to see in the proposed balanced general fund budget the two million for police. The money is not there. But we are footnoting that they do have a need and probably will come back and ask the board if it's not going to be included in the funding here at some point. They will come back and ask the board to approve it from discretionary fund balance.
Follow-up, yes.
Thank you. Just to clarify, if we decided we wanted to use these funds that we're talking about today for the police fleet, is that appropriate, or is it something we can't use these funds for?
I would say that it would be premature in that we still have a pending threshold issue that's going to guide how much funds would be left for the board to consider for vehicle replacement. that's going to guide how much funds would be left for the board to consider for vehicle replacement. So I would say that it would be premature. Until that union impasse matter is settled by the board, I think it's premature to recommend dollar amounts for any of the categories.
Okay. Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Administrator Johnson, I think my question is more for you on the theory of kind of taking this, these funds in particular, and using it for this purpose. So under the American Rescue Plan guidelines, we are using this money to replace lost revenue. When we went through the budgeting process, there were a number of departments that squeezed down a lot of things out of their individual budgets. And so I guess when I see refunding lost revenue, I think of those individual departments and how they would get back some of those resources. Is the idea here that we are looking at replacing vehicles across a broad category of departments? And so when we look at the budget for next year, in essence, those departments wouldn't have to fund these needs and then those funds would be opened up to kind of help out with those things that were cut out of department budgets?
No to the last question. These funds would not be used for departments' budget. And we need to put this in the context of the two sides of the ledger. So departments' budgets were cut back. Some of them cut into the bone, not to the bone. But that was on the operating side. These are one-time dollars. So these funds are recommended for items that fall into a one-time category, and that's capital. Because of where we were with the budget, departments were not permitted to include vehicles in their budget. And therein lies the crux of the issue of why we have this critical need. Now, departments didn't have capital in their budgets this year, but this trend goes back many, many years where because we didn't recover from the 2009 real estate recession, that was one of the sacrifices that departments made where they were not getting capital items. So it was not in their budget. In terms of replacing their resources, I don't see us being in that position for another few years because the operating budget has to be able to assert that because it's an ongoing cost.
Understood. And I think you answered my question in there as far as the theory. We're looking at different pockets of money. And from a holistic point of view on every department, I think it sounds like the theory is to be able to use those different categories of funds to fulfill the needs and looking at the whole picture of a department versus trying to break it into pieces of operational versus capital.
Yes, but that's how I have to look at the budget. That's how I have to look at it. Because you don't want to bill your operating budget on one-time money because you're going to have a major hit and gap that ensue in years. So as a matter of best practice from a budgeting standpoint, you never bill an operating budget on one-time money unless you have guaranteed revenue that's coming in the ensuing year to backfill that gap. So that would not be a practice that you will see me bring forward as your city administrator.
Understood, Administrator. Very familiar with capital and operational budgeting. I guess when I'm looking at this, where I'm trying to drill down and maybe I'm looking at it from a different angle, is that if we're replacing lost revenue, the guidelines look at lost revenue completely over time, not necessarily just lost revenue due to COVID specifically. Because obviously, this wasn't due to COVID specifically. This is a number of factors that have built up over time. And I guess that's just what I'm trying to understand in the guidance.
Okay, so let me see if I can clarify that. And maybe the city attorney can better articulate this than me. The lost revenue has to be tied to COVID-19. However, the city has the discretion to then take the reimbursement of that lost revenue and apply it to needs that will help keep the city going, you know, as it relates to addressing issues that are related to COVID. So if I take fire rescue, for example, we need to have fire rescue trucks on the road to still continue to provide services to residents that may be impacted by COVID or a number of other things. So that's how the two relate.
That explains it, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Guzman? Commissioner Lambert.
Actually, it's for Administrator Johnson. But based on this slide here, I completely understand the statement that was made before we started this that we're still anticipating a public hearing regarding the impasse. What I just want some further clarification on is, Ms. Johnson, I'm hearing you say we're not making financial recommendations, but all I'm hearing that is relating to the 2 or 2.2 million related to the police. Is that correct? Because there's other numbers up here. I guess I just would like some, and I'm seeing heads nodding in different directions from this data. So it seems like there may be some confusion.
Okay, let me make certain I'm understanding the question. We're not making funding recommendations at all. I'm not making a funding recommendation on the 2.2 related to police. I'm not making funding recommendations at all. What I indicated is that if the police vehicles, at whatever point, the impasse matter gets settled and then the board decides how it wants to allocate the $12.5 million here in these three categories. If it does not include enough to cover police vehicles, what I expect is that police is going to come back and ask the board to consider that out of discretionary unassigned fund balance. And I don't know if that answers your question.
I think maybe some confusion may be, these numbers are not recommended numbers.
No, not at all.
This is just the current situation.
Yes, yes.
This is the description of the situation. You're not recommending 8 million or 10 million be sent.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Does that clarify the confusion?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Yes, Mr. President.
Along those lines, I know Commissioner Fox had, if I understood her question correctly, was whether the funds would be appropriately used on the police department fleet. And you had said it would be premature to consider that because we don't know where we are with regard to the negotiations. It would be an appropriate use potentially, though, the police department fleet of these funds, just like any of these other categories.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this particular portion of the presentation? Okay, Ms. Johnson. Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. I'm going to have Mr. Rodriguez to come up and give the board an overview of the various categories that we are proposing be considered for premium pay when we get to the point of making decisions about premium pay allocations.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The purpose of my part of the presentation is to give you an overview of the essential worker job classifications that we are recommending for discussion purposes, for your consideration, and also the number of preliminary number of employees that we believe would be impacted. And then, of course, have commission question and discussion on the items. A couple of key points setting this issue up is that the types of positions that we are proposing are not, as previously discussed, only public safety because there were a number of employees across various classifications that kept different operations, whether at the water plants, out in the community, in the parks, in city hall, running, which support, you know, all of the services that the city provides, including public safety services. The estimated number of employees that would be deemed essential under our proposal for consideration is about 1,275. The reason why you don't see all 1,685 FTEs is because employees that regularly work remotely during the pandemic emergency cannot receive American Rescue Plan funds. So those automatically have to be taken off the table. So you will see in later slides, slides where you have more job classifications at employees that would be affected because we would have to go by each classification that you wind up approving. And then, you know, kind of tease out the employees that, you may have two employees in the same classification, but one worked remotely and one didn't. And the one that didn't gets the COVID premium pay. The ones that came in here or were out in the community get the COVID pay. But the ones that work remotely will not, even though they may have the same job title. And when we add up all of the classifications, all of the preliminary classifications across public safety, the unions, and non-public safety, it comes out to about 229 different job titles. Job classifications and job titles is an interchangeable term in HR terms. So the first group is public safety. Our estimate is that that would affect about 294 positions represented by the FOP in those categories that you see there, police officer, sergeant, lieutenant. And then the non-sworn members of the FOP, crime scene investigator, community service, a latent print examiner, and senior latent print examiner. Similarly, for the fire positions, we would have approximately 250 employees in those five categories of firefighter, captain, battalion chief, lieutenant, and driver engineer. For the PMSA, the Professional Managers and Supervisors Association, our initial estimate is approximately 45 positions. But there, as I previously mentioned, you see more than 45 job classifications because we would have to go through each job classification and determine which of those people qualify. But all of these positions that we are recommending for PMSA, non-union employees, and for SEIU were arrived at by looking at the types of functions that those positions performed and whether those positions, for the most part, would have been positions that would have likely been performing duties in person versus performing duties, job duties remotely. And that's what led to the compilation of this list. So there is a logical reason why some positions are here and some positions may not be here. And of course, this is just a draft for discussion purposes that's subject to the input and the, you know, the commission and the mayor. For the SEIU union, we similarly see that we would, we think we would probably be approximately 312 positions or employees that would be affected in these various job classifications, which range from telecommunications that reported on, in person, to process 911 calls, parks maintenance workers, street sweepers, sanitation workers, irrigation takers. We also see administrative assistants because some administrative assistants, because of their functions, couldn't work remotely. Others could. So some of those administrative assistants also would be impacted and would may qualify for any premium pay the city may decide to award or to budget for. For the non-union represented positions, a rough estimate is 374 positions across these various job titles upon our initial review. And they run the gamut from, you know, clerical and administrative positions to some supervisory positions and specialized positions. So in summary, that 1,275 estimate of affected employees that I mentioned in my first slide is comprised of the 294 for the police union, 250 in the fire union, 45 in the PMSA union, 312 in the SEIU union, and then non-union employees, about 374 to get to that title, to that total. And that represents about over 229 job classifications that would be up for consideration. And with that, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Commissioner, I mean, President Peduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just my thoughts. I think that it would be appropriate for there to be like three classifications of employees. Those that were frontline workers who had close and daily contact with the public, not necessarily just first responders. Because there's other frontline workers who are out there and showed up to work and had close contact, had no choice but to be in people's houses or, you know, one-on-one with people. And then the next category would be those who came to work, were physically present, worked behind the scenes, and had some contact maybe with the public, maybe with a screen in front of them or, you know, that kind of contact. Not necessarily the kind of exposure that the frontline workers would have. And then third, the category that I guess would not even be considered regardless because they're not eligible under this, would be those that worked remotely. But I think that, so can there be a graduated premium pay? That those who had the most exposure, that were on the front lines, get the lion's share of the premium pay? And then have it graduated down depending on the duties that they had to perform during the pandemic?
Well, we are not recommending amounts per employee category. So in terms of the final list of categories that would qualify, the number of employees that would qualify, and whether those employees are divided into one or two or three groups and what amount each group receives, that is all subject to the direction of the mayor and the commission. We are not recommending it. The way that we presented this presentation is at a higher level just so that you can get a ballpark of how many employees may be affected and how many job categories may be affected. But how that's divided and teased out and budgeted would be a direction from the dais.
And Mr. Rodriguez is right. We don't know yet how big the pie is that we're going to have to divide. And that will affect our approach, our thinking. Once we determine the size of the pie, we could come back with more specific recommendations. But your point is noted. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Madam City Attorney, did you have something to add?
I did. And this is just to assist you and guide your discussion in this regard. I just want to read from the interim rules as it relates to premium pay. It says, "To ensure that premium pay is targeted to workers who faced or face heightened risk due to the character of their work, the interim final rule defines essential worker as work involving regular in-person interactions or regular physical handling of items that were also handled by others."
And we will take that into account when we're coming up. Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I think what would be helpful is, I know we're not recommending specific amounts, but if we could talk about the parameters. There were parameters listed like something $13 per hour, not to exceed 150%, et cetera. If we could understand a minimum and a maximum, if you will, to understand what the financial commitment could be from the city. Again, I know not a recommendation, but I think it's difficult for me to look at the numbers that we have and understand where financially we would be, you know, following the guidelines. Because these guidelines give us certain parameters as well. So I don't know if there's some way to quantify it. Again, I understand the nuance of having an upcoming public hearing of which different evidence will be presented, et cetera. But it will be even difficult in that circumstance to understand where financially we have $24 million that we're looking at in total, this need and various other needs. I guess it would be important to know where we would fall at a maximum level and where we would fall at a minimum level based upon employee category. If you could kind of explain, even if just given one position, be it an administrative position, what an example of premium pay would look like for that position within the minimum and maximums of the parameters?
Let me take that. You know, at this point, there is no way that we can establish, you know, what a minimum would look like and what a maximum would look like in that the mayor and the board has full discretion to just determine the dollar amount that you want to allocate toward each employee group that you determine to be eligible for premium pay. So it's literally impossible to establish what a minimum would be and what a maximum would be, you know, theoretically. The board could say, after you look at the list of categories, based on some sort of definition. If we take Commissioner Peduzzi's example by frontline and then that second category, the board could determine for that second category, we want to just give X dollar amount. And if you want to do a delta between that second category and the first category, then we're going to do an up, a variance increase of X amount to the first category. So it's very difficult, Commissioner Shoff, to do, you know, a range, you know, unless the board says, we're going to allocate this total dollar amount for premium pay. And administration, we want you to go back and then decide, you know, based on all of the positions that we support as eligible for it, to determine how you want to do by ranges. But I think doing it by ranges is... doing it by ranges is, is inappropriate. It's just a lump sum amount.
Yeah. And I, I understand. I think that's why I'm trying to get some parameters around, just understanding how the guidance is laid out. And, and maybe what you're saying is it's completely an open book as to what, what we can do here. But is it typically, so just as I look at category to category, is premium pay determined typically by job title? Is it determined, I'm struggling whenever we, we started out here and said something about $13 an hour. Do you take an hourly premium pay and apply it to someone's pay typically? How, how is this determined? Or is it just determined by us sitting as a board and saying, as a lump sum, each job category is awarded this, this amount?
I think it's determined by, I'll let the city attorney, but I think for the most part, it's determined by the latter, you know, by the board. But I think there is some guidance in, in whatnot.
The information that was provided in the presentation was just that, it's guidance. And what it said was you can pay, I mean, it put, it put the maximums on the table. So it says to, to you, the guidance documents, you can pay up to $13 an hour and no more than $25,000 per person. That's your maximum. But your, your minimum and how you do the remainder of it is, is up to you. And then it gives you additional guidance. We want you to focus on the lower income wage earners. We want to make sure that if you want to provide money to folks who are the higher wage earners, that you provide that justification when it's over 150% of the state or the county average for that particular job title. So there are some parameters, but they're really just guideposts to help you in making your final determination.
Okay. Thank you.
And Commissioners, we will come back to you with more specific recommendations. This is kind of a two-part discussion. The, the first part is just so you could see, and it is more background information, the, the, the number of categories, job titles, et cetera. But as we, going back to my pie analogy, once we figure out the size of the pie, then we will, you know, crunch the numbers and make recommendations to you. And so we'll have that second conversation. But, but you're not expected to, you know, just pull numbers out of the, the air to, to come up. We, we will do that analysis, keeping in mind the guidelines and, and recommendations that, that have been set forth. And when we come back to you, we will have a, the, the business case laid out as, what our recommendations are, why we made the recommendations, and then we'll have a more informed discussion as, as a group. So this is kind of a two-stage conversation here. And then we're just entering the first stage. Commissioner Fox.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you, Mayor, for that explanation. My question is, I guess going forward, I, you know, spent the last year working at home, and so I am very supportive of premium pay for all those who had to come in to keep our city running. But I also think it would be helpful for me if, going forward, when we make our final decisions, I know that there are some categories that were given at least cost of living allowance raises last year. And there are other unions that we are still negotiating with that did not have a contract at all, were not given any raises, premium pay, anything like that. So it would be helpful for me to know in those categories that you presented, if we could see which of those job titles were given a cost of living allowance last year so that we could help make our decisions.
Well, that question I can answer based on the presentation, because in this slide you see non-union positions. Non-union positions did not receive an across-the-board last year. So if you were a member of the public safety unions or SEIU or PMSA, you received a cost of living adjustment. If you were a non-union employee across various categories, from management all the way to, to, across all the departments, if you were not in a union, you did not receive a cost of living. So that's, you know, that, that would help you. But we, we try to, when we develop these types of recommendations, to have some consistency so that you don't have a situation where within one job classification, you've got, you know, one person receiving this much of a stipend who has the title, perfect example is administrative assistant. You had some administrative assistants that were part of a union that received a COLA and others that didn't. So when you start getting into COVID pay and you start saying, well, these administrative assistants are going to get $150, just for argument's sake, but these are going to get 200, they're within the same category. So you try to have a uniformity and equity. So, so I would just, that would just be the only, from an HR perspective, the only concern that I would ask you to, to, to consider, that, that as simple as you can make it is better.
Mr. Rodriguez, I think we can also answer the question on what groups actually receive COVID stipend. We know that public safety received a COVID stipend of $1,200, PMSA received $600, and SEIU did not receive a COVID stipend, and neither did any of the non-union employees receive a COVID stipend. So that has already been provided. We, we, we know that.
Yeah.
And, and when we come back to you, we will have that information available to you to remind you. We'll make sure we have that as part of the presentation for the second phase, that backup. Okay? I'm asking.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Rodriguez's comments? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Johnson.